Could we all please rise? This is the, welcome everyone. This is a regularly scheduled school committee meeting. Today is March, March 18th, right? Well, let's begin the meeting by saluting the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Clark, please call the roll.
Mr. Gendron?
Here.
Ms. Deliri?
Here.
Ms. Martin? Ms. Rossikowicz?
Here.
Ms. Scott?
Here.
Mr. Conway?
Here.
Mayor Elliott?
Here.
Seven present.
Present, quorum, quorum is present. Let's move right into the special order of business section of the agenda. We have the first item. We have an Eagle Scout with us tonight. And he's going to, his name is Michael Wojcisz. Michael, welcome to the council chamber. And Michael's here tonight. He's going to talk to us about a textile recycling project that he is going to be performing as part of his Eagle Scout project. Michael, welcome.
Thank you very much. I'd like to start off by thanking the school committee for their time in hearing me tonight. I'd like to give a special thank you for Mayor Elliott for giving me the opportunity to speak here tonight. So for my project, Eagle project, I'm doing a textile recycling rebate program for local schools in the city. And my name's Michael Wojcisz again. So a brief little intro about me. I'm a venture crewman in a Boy Scout troop 23 in Lowell. I'm the troop secretary. I'm currently a life scout. I also was in charge of the annual Christmas tree pickup fundraiser for my troop this year, which brought in over $2,000 in three days. I'm also an aspiring Eagle Scout, which is why I'm here tonight. So a brief overview of my presentation, I'm going to go over the problem of textile recycling and the lack of it. Information of my textile collection bins, some information about Baystate Textiles, the company that I will be working with for this project, a map of Lowell with like icons showing where the schools will be, timeline of my project, the savings and impact, not only monetary impact, but recycling impact for the city, and then also my next steps for the project following this presentation and the people I've been working with. So the problem is, a lot of textiles are thrown away when they could be recycled. According to the Environmental Protection Agency, over 21 billion pounds of usable textiles are disposed of each year. This equates to around 70 pounds per person every year. All this textile waste takes up 5.2% of all landfill space in the United States, and only about 15% of textiles are recycled. And that's the problem. And our city's contribution to this is 1,754 tons. My solution to this problem is textile recycling collection bins. I propose to place these at 14, starting at 14 of the public elementary schools throughout the city. These bins work just like your mailbox. You bag up textiles used and unwanted, and you place them in the bins for collection. And some information about these bins, they can store about 300 to 500 pounds of bagged textiles. The dimensions, just for a size information, are four feet by four feet by six feet, 10 inches. And these bins are branded for the Lowell community. And all these bins are provided at no cost to the city by Baystate Textiles. So Baystate Textiles is a company that I'll be working with. They're the ones who are providing the bins at no cost. And so they'll be responsible for, they will own, ensure, and maintain all collection bins that are placed in Lowell. So they'll take care of them at no cost. If there's damage to them, the city does not have to worry. Baystate Textiles will take care of this. And also, Baystate will service and collect and empty these bins on a weekly basis, but if there are bins that collect more and need to be collected, to be, the material collected earlier, they'll service them more than once a week, if necessary. And they're also providing rebate payments. Baystate Textiles will pay a rebate of $100 per ton of every usable textile. Rebate payments will be made on a monthly basis. So the way the rebate payments work, all the payments will be given to the schools at which the bins are placed. We're planning on putting them towards the schools' green teams or other things, depending on what the school particularly wants. We'll speak to them on a school-to-school basis for that. And the way it works is, let's say Bailey collects two tons, and the Mori collects one ton. The Bailey, after the month period, will be given $200, and the Mori will be given $100. So every school gets what they collect. And so these are where the bins will be placed in Lowell. Also, they'll be placed at every elementary school, public, so at the beginning. They cover, if you can see, both sides of the river and have a pretty good distribution throughout the city. And that's a map of, with pins marking all the schools. So my current timeline, today is March 18th. I'm presenting the school committee currently, so I'm on track with that. Following March 23rd, I will be contacting and scheduling these meetings with the schools to inform them of my project and get them on a school-to-school basis approval and where they want the bins to go. And those meetings will be conducted from the 30th of this month to the 3rd of April. By the first week of April, we will have the first round of bins delivered and operational. We're assuming that this will be around five. And then by the third week of April, we want all the bins delivered and operational. So on all your desks, you have two pieces of paper. One is a flyer that I will be giving to the schools, mailing them to the schools, which is the trifold pamphlet style item, hopefully tomorrow. And those will be going to the schools, so by the time I do contact them on the 23rd, they'll already have a heads-up of what I'm going to be talking about, a little information on the program and the whole goal of the project. And the other document attached is what the schools will give out to their students once the bins are in place. This will inform the parents and the community of the bins and the service provided and how they can help out with that. And on the back of that flyer is the acceptable items and non-acceptable items, so the parents have a clear understanding of what they can and cannot put into these bins. So savings, earnings, and impact. So the trash disposal tonnage of 2014 says the city of Lowell had 1,512 tons of textiles were thrown away, costing the city $112,000 to dispose of these textiles. Now, statistics say that out of the, all textiles disposed, 95% of these are recyclable. So 1,500 tons, we pay $112,000 to incinerate, when we could be earning money on these textiles. So of those 1,500 tons of textiles, the city paid to incinerate, we could earn in rebate payments a total of $1,511,000. That's optimistic. That's if every single person donates all their textiles and diverts it all from the city to the bins. But a more prospective, early stages, if, an example would be if every student in Lowell brought in two 10-pound bags of textiles, that'd be 139 tons, bringing in $14,000 to the public schools. And all upkeep and maintenance of these bins are also covered by Baystate Textiles at no cost to the city. So you're really not losing any money here by agreeing with this project. All it is, is money coming into the city and diversion of trash recycling textiles from the city into their hands. So another city also has this program, Waymouth. And the earnings they made in the first three years is $16,750, and they have 12 bins throughout the city placed at the schools. And we plan on placing 14. And also, again, we have twice the population of Waymouth. They're around 55,000, we're a bit over 100,000 people. So the next steps that I'm going to be taking after this, I will be sending the flyers to the schools, so they'll be able to know when I'm contacting them, and a little information about that. And then we're going to finish the customized container signage. This is the logo that's going to go on the front of the bins. As it stands right now, we have the reduce, reuse, recycle on the top with the city emblem and the Boy Scouts of America at the bottom. And then we'll also be arranging the collection routes, once we have the bins placed, with Baystate Textiles. And we've talked to them about this to prevent any problems with school pickup and drop-off, and they said that they will try and maintain like, good hours, so they come when it's not pickup or drop-off or recess time. And if they do come at a time that's inconvenient on a personal basis, they will call off the collection and divert it to another day. And then after two full weeks of collection, I will be presenting to my Eagle Scout Board of Review and displaying what I've done for the project. So not only are those the next steps for me, going from life to Eagle, but it's also the next step for the city. In alignment with Sustainable Lowell 2025, the city plans on having a more efficient recycling program, and I have three quotes from that. Sustainable Lowell 2025 Objective 2, the link to the article is, or the PDF document is at the bottom of the page, and all these quotes are from page 113. And I think that's a good recap of my project, going over each key point. So developing, I will be developing policies and programs that will build upon the success of reducing solid waste and increasing recycling citywide. I'll also be implementing a recycling program in the schools. And I will also be, I will be improving diversion of reusable materials such as clothing from municipal solid waste through public drop boxes. So I will be recycling and incorporating schools through drop, public drop boxes. So through this process, I've been working with two people mostly, and these people, my first one is Mrs. Larson with Baystate Textiles. She's been who I've been contacting to communicate with them, and she's been very helpful, providing all the information on the bins that I've needed, and she's going, and her responsibilities for the project. She will be placing the logos on the bins, ordering them, and making sure that they get to all the schools, and after they're at the schools, ensuring that they're upkept and everyone services them on a weekly or more basis. Also with me tonight is Mr. Wellenstein, who's worked with me throughout this project. He's with the Department of Public Works, and he's helped me, he's been the key to several things in the project, mostly opening doors and getting me to speak to people, and also giving me the statistics and stuff that I needed. I also would like to thank him for all the help he's done, and also his responsibilities after this project, is he's going to be the first person to call whenever there's a problem with the bins. The calls go directly to him, which makes me feel comfortable, because I know he gets things done, and he'll contact Baystate and take care of the problem. And lastly, myself, I've been doing this for my Eagle project, and I want this to get the city to help, not only the school community by bringing in money for the schools that, without them, I wouldn't probably be here today. Without education, that's very important. Also, we'll be saving money for, or the city, and also helping the environment at the same time. And so, thank you all for your time, and if there's any questions, I'll take those now.
Okay, I'm sure there'll be a couple of questions, but let me congratulate you. That was a very good presentation. What grade are you in?
Thank you.
Yeah.
I'm, uh, thank you. I'm a junior.
You're a junior?
Yes.
Well done. And I think this is a terrific project. When Gunther contacted me and asked if we could bring it in, I thought it was certainly a very worthwhile project from many angles that you described in your presentation. I'm very impressed. I just have, and if Gunther is, if something does go wrong, and if you say that Gunther's going to get all the calls, we're good with it, so.
Yeah.
I didn't think there was a way for Gunther to come up with another creative way of recycling, but he has, he's done it again. So, one question, what's the length of time for these bins to be out at the schools? How long are they going to stay there? Once you have completed your Eagle Scout project, will this continue? You know, the only concern is, there are other bins, and Gunther knows this. Throughout the city, they tend to be, through no fault of you or the company, sometimes they end up a dumping ground. We just want to, so what is the length of time that this will be in existence?
Well, as soon as I talk to the schools, it takes two weeks to get the bins out. And once the bin's out, we're planning on having them permanently through the city, but there's no particularly binding contract. If the schools want to remove the bins from their property, they can do so at any time. So if that proves inconvenient, they have the right to do that. And also, mentioned timeline for the bins, but...
So they're, they're going to be permanently stationed there?
Permanently there, up to the school's discretion. Yes.
Okay. Questions, Mr. Gendron?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Rossikowicz?
So I would also like to congratulate you, Michael. That was a tremendous presentation. I admire your, your inspiration to do something like this, and I think you're a terrific representative of the Boy Scouts of America. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And I think certainly, this makes a lot of sense. I think that anytime we can redirect recycling, things that could be recycled from our waste stream, it saves the city money in that fashion, and obviously, it's an environmentally sound thing to do. And, you know, in this particular mode, the schools could actually make some money as well. There are concerns about leaving bins like this in school property, so, but I think they could, concerns that we could probably overcome. So I'd like to say that maybe we have the superintendent take a look at this, and rather than just have you mail flyers to all the schools, you know, perhaps the superintendent can contact the schools cooperatively with you to see if we can come up with a program that will work for something like this. Madam Superintendent, do you have a comment on that?
Yeah, I was going to tell Michael that you, I should definitely get your email or leave it with someone on that podium right there, because what I will do is, I'll let the principals know that you're going to be calling, so when they hear your name, because they're really busy people, that they'll take those kind of calls and think about how this is mutually, mutually beneficial and a great idea to just do something action stepwise. So I think it's a great idea, but I will help you, and I'll email you when they know, so then you won't be saying your name and having a hard time getting through. I'll let the secretaries and the principals know that you're on your way, okay?
Okay, thank you very much. And also, all our emails are on the, this document here, as well as I know you have, I believe, the slides as well, which are all on that as well.
And Madam Superintendent, just to follow up on that, perhaps, you know, it's something we do at a subset of the schools to begin with, you know, have half a dozen schools to begin with as a pilot program, see how that works out, and then go from there, once we sort of iron out all the issues. Thank you.
Ms. Rossikowicz?
Thank you, Mayor. Michael, this is fantastic, and I really appreciate your, we all do, your initiative and your inventiveness. One of the pieces, one of the questions I had was about having these flyers and these pamphlets printed in multiple languages. I'm sure that's something that the school department perhaps maybe can help with, I'm not sure. But you have these, this information going home to multilingual families. Oftentimes, it's the children that are, you know, the stronger English speakers, and so if we want to get the families involved, I think that would be of great benefit. And then I would also put this out there, is there another Eagle Scout that might be interested in championing our food diversion, food waste diversion program throughout Lowell public schools? So just to put that out there, if you have a friend, fellow Eagle, who might be interested in spearheading that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. Conway?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Michael, that was an amazing presentation.
Thank you.
And, you know, I certainly congratulate you. There are, it's very unique when someone comes up with unusual ideas, and it's also extremely difficult to take those new ideas and bring them forward. There are many people that have great ideas, but yet, they don't want to bring them forward because they're afraid of failure, or ridicule, or somebody saying no. And I think that you are a perfect example of coming forward with an idea that's unique, creative, and certainly is something that is going to be beneficial, not only to the school system, but to the city. And for that, I truly congratulate you for that, and I certainly hope that you continue with this unique and creative bone that you have. And again, don't, you know, when a door might be slammed on you, go to the next door, because I think perhaps that's what you have done. So again, congratulations.
All right, thank you very much.
Further questions for Michael? Well, we'll thank, entertain a motion to proceed with this, with this project, to have Michael work with the superintendent by Mr. Deliri's second, by Mr. Conway, for the discussion. Gunther, did you want to say a couple of words? No?
Wow. It's Michael's project.
It is Michael's project, and I appreciate your assistance and, you know, working with Michael to make sure that all of the questions and the project is properly laid out. We thank you again for saving the city money. Kim Scott, Ms. Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can I just ask one quick question from Mr. Lang? Would we have to execute some type of memorandum of understanding with Baystate Textiles for the insurance, the drop-off times, the overflow? Would that be something that we'd have to refer to you to set up?
We'd probably, through you, Mr. Mayor, we probably want just some, some type of written agreement, memorandum of agreement, understanding, just to delineate the terms, and probably just to have the city be added as an additional insurer in their insurance policy. But when you contact the superintendent's office, we can work through the details.
For the discussion? Seeing none of those in favor, the motion is signified by saying aye, and the opposed, motion carries. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We look forward to hearing from you, and good luck with, good luck with this project.
All right, thank you.
Is that his father? Do you want to say a few words, Dad? You're good? You're proud, Dad?
I'm a proud dad. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Moving on to the next item of the agenda, we have another individual, special order of business. We have a presentation by Paul Marion, Lowell author. With no further ado, Mr. Marion, welcome to City Council Chamber again.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm Paul Marion, 44 Highland Street. I live across the street from the Rogers School. I'm a school neighbor, I'm happy about it. It's great to have a school in the neighborhood. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Superintendent Franco, all members of the school committee, particularly Dave Conway, who reached out to me to provide this invitation tonight. You know, it's interesting to follow Michael and talk about my book for a couple of minutes, because, you know, he's describing a recycling project, and for the past 40 years, Lowell has been this grand recycling project. It's one way to think about what's happened in the city. You know, we, you know, those of us who've been here, we know, you know, the changes that have occurred, and, you know, it was, it was a city in the 1960s and 70s that had a lot of challenges, there were problems to overcome, and people from Lowell really were the ones who rolled up their sleeves and began working on it, used their minds and came up with fresh ideas, same way this young man, Michael, is proposing new ideas tonight. So I'm here this evening to talk about my book, Mill Power. The subtitle is "The Origin and Impact of Lowell National Historical Park." And it's the story of how Lowell got on the list of the Grand Canyon, the Statue of Liberty, Gettysburg Battlefield, Yellowstone, Yosemite. If you had said to somebody 50 years ago that Lowell was going to be in that company, not very many people probably would have believed that that was going to happen. But really, through an incredible act of kind of collective will and amazing imagination, people had a vision of what Lowell could be, the city was transformed, you know, beginning in the, in the mid 1960s, and it continues today. I mean, we see it every day, those of us who live here. And it's particularly appropriate that I'm here at a school committee meeting, because the national park in Lowell is really an educational gesture. And the whole comeback of Lowell, at least the community organizing part, in many ways can be seen as an initiative of educators, because it was through the education component of the Model Cities Program, the innovative urban redevelopment program of the middle 1960s, that Lowell received some funds, and it brought together a really astounding collection of people, like Patrick Mogan and Peter Stamos, and Kay Georgelis, and Lily and Lamro, and Clementine Alexis, and Maurice Weenie, and all of those people were teachers. And, and they began in the acre, because the acre, just outside our window here, was the demonstration neighborhood for the Model Cities Program. And the challenge was to try to make Lowell move forward in a way that was productive and constructive, and not one that destroyed the fabric and the story of the city. We had seen through the devastation in Little Canada in the early 60s, the, the raising of the Hale Howard neighborhood, you know, the old form of urban renewal, where you just blow things up. And people thought something will come after, and it really, it didn't happen that way. And so you had these neighborhoods that were just torn apart, the culture of the city changed, and through that trauma, really, the preservation ethic began to take hold. And it was, you know, right out here where the Merrimack Manufacturing Company was, and the boarding houses in particular, in the middle 1960s, when people saw, you know, those, you know, special buildings, you know, they were, they were not works of architecture that you were going to see again. You know, they represented a time and a, and a place and a, and a story, and people began to organize to try to make the case that history is worth preserving and there's something to be found there. I just want to read a short passage from the Model Cities Report in 1972, and it's really a, an impressive statement of what kind of life people were looking for, those first organizers, you know, who came together in the acre and in other, other parts of the city. And it says, "Through the century, man's basic needs have been intimately tied to the happiness and fulfillment he seeks from life. The complexities of present-day urban environments haven't changed this, for our aspirations are, in essence, as timeless as the natural cycle of birth and death. We seek adequate food and shelter, outlets for our skills and our inborn creative talents, health, safety, stimuli for learning and self-expression, the presence of open space, of sky above us, grass at our feet, and sunshine's warm embrace. Because we are interrelating creatures, we also seek companionship, compassion, and understanding of our fellow human beings. The fundamental reason for a city's existence is to foster those human values." I mean, that's a very sophisticated vision of how people should live together, and that, and that was the belief system of these folks who were trying to get Lowell back on its feet in the late 60s, early 70s. And the national park was really one manifestation of that. Pat Mogan, you know, another legend of the school system, he always said, "The national park was a means to an end." In his view, the health of the whole community was really what you were driving at, and having a national park was one means to get there, but it wasn't like the national park was the end result, and once you got there, that was over. You know, one of the great contributions of Pat Mogan was this sort of a new way of thinking about learning, and, and we see it embedded in one of the great, you know, partnerships of the Lowell school system and the National Park Service and the university, and that's the Songas Industrial History Center, where 50,000 kids and teachers, you know, pass through the boot mills every year. And it's all about hands-on, place-based learning, and that's different than that old-school form of education where there was instruction and wrote, you know, memory, and not so much learning by doing. Even at UMass Lowell, where I work, you know, there's a belief that learning by doing is the way that, you know, the most transformative type education takes place. So, you know, the national park not only was born out of ideas of educators, but it's really... really today operating as a kind of massive educational operation. So, thank you for, you know, inviting me here tonight. I don't want to take up too much time. The superintendent, Celeste Bernado, gave me some books for the members. I know some of you already have books, but I'm sure you know somebody who might want one. The other thing, I'd just like to say, I'd love to see the book incorporated into the experience of Lowell schoolchildren. I'm happy to go into any classes that might be interested in having me. I'm not saying this as a sales pitch, because all the proceeds go to the national park. I don't have a financial stake in the book. But I have a stake in the story. And it's been, you know, twenty years, you know, since we've had a Lowell history book published. The Continuum Revolution came out in 1992. Before that, Cotton Was King in 1976. So this really brings the history up to date in a way that we just don't have anyplace else. And there's a lot of people walking around, including some people in this room, whose names are in the book and who are still part of the story. So, you know, I hope that the book finds a home in many Lowell families' houses. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Marion. Appreciate it. So we thank you, we thank you for the books as well. I'm sure they'll be put to good use. To the maker of the motion, who suggested bringing Mr. Marion in, we appreciate it. Mr. Conway?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm sure that my colleagues join in in thanking Paul Marion for coming here and giving this presentation. I think it's extremely important that we take a look at this book. And again, there are people like Paul Marion that certainly helped to, that helped to stimulate the minds, to let people know what is going on in the city, what has happened in the city. And I think that's so powerful, especially for the city of Lowell. Because as we all know, it's the melting pot. There are so many different ethnic groups represented here in this city. I think there's somewhere in the sixty-five or seventy different countries are represented with over forty different languages. And keeping all that in mind, I think it's important that we understand where we're living, what took place, and also to partake in the future of Lowell. So again, I certainly thank Paul Marion for this presentation. And I hope the superintendent and the curriculum people can somehow take some of this material, certainly, and weave it into our curriculum to let the students in our school system know what has happened, what their rich history is all about. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Conway. Mr. Jennings?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Paul, for that presentation and the book. I will definitely add this to my list of books that I need to read. Paul is a great Lowellian, and you can't hang around or talk to Paul very long without feeling good about the city of Lowell, and his passion overflows. So it's great to have him here at the meeting. It's great to have him talk about this book. And I would like to say that we do have a course at Lowell High School, the History of Lowell. I think it's a great idea to have Paul visit that course. Maybe, Madam Superintendent, you can coordinate with the headmaster and Mr. Thornton, I think, who teaches that course, and see if we can bring Paul in there and maybe give a synopsis of what's in his book and maybe encourage the students there to read it. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Jennings. Further discussion? Seeing none. Thank you on behalf of the committee. Mr. Marion, we thank you for coming again. And it looks like you'll be visiting Lowell High School pretty soon, so have a good night. Thank you. Moving on to the next item on the agenda. Actually, entertain a motion to suspend the rules to take an item that is under public participation. If there's no objection, motion by Mr. Conway, second by Mr. Larry, to suspend the rules to take an item out of order. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. And the opposed, motion carries. So we'll move on to public participation. Item number ten, we have Susan Uvani, 234 Nesmith Street, Lowell, Mass. We have a letter registered to speak on item number 135. What is the wish of the committee? Want me to read the letter or Ms. Uvani, you just want to come up and state?
Yes, please.
Your intent?
Okay. Mayor Elliott, Superintendent Franco, and members of the school committee. My name is Susan Uvani. I live at 234 Nesmith Street in Lowell. I'm a teacher at the Maury Elementary School. I'm an active participant in the Lowell Teachers Union. I am here tonight to speak to you on behalf of myself, many of my colleagues, and frankly, my entire profession. I thank you for this opportunity. I've been a teacher for nearly twenty years. What I'd like to address tonight does not come lightly, nor without serious thought and contemplation. In addition to my duties as an educator, I also serve as a building representative. It is a position I take very seriously. Most recently, at a building representative meeting, all UTL building reps were made aware of a certain term being interjected into the language of the superintendent search that could possibly exclude our union president, Paul Georges, from participation on the advisory committee. That term is active. Outrage would not be too forceful of a word to use in response to the building representatives' response to this eleventh-hour news. However, outrage pales compared to what was heard when we returned to our buildings and informed our colleagues of this most recent development. I will not take the time here to explain why I believe Paul Georges is a necessary part of the process. His dedication to all of his members is unequaled and highly valued. Instead, I would like to take my time before you to make you aware that many of the teachers, paraprofessionals, custodians, and cafeteria workers, many of whom are your constituents, are shocked by what they are hearing. It seems to many of us that you could possibly be actively trying to exclude the one person who represents all of us, the teachers, the paraprofessionals, the custodians, and the cafeteria workers alike. It takes all of us to provide the very best opportunities for our children. With or without your intent, it appears that this school committee may be a silent supporter of this new exclusionary word. Please prove to us that we are wrong. Be the school committee that does not deprive the 1,600 UTL members from having a voice into selecting who will represent us on the advisory committee. Clearly, in my opinion, Paul Georges' participation in the last two superintendent searches resulted in two outstanding choices to lead our school system. In conclusion, it is now in your hands to remedy this deeply troubling situation. Somewhere, someone through this process has overstepped their boundaries and created a sense of mistrust in our community. It's now up to you to fix it. Again, please do the right thing.
Excuse me? There's another individual under public participation who has registered to speak. Mary Ann Dumont, 169 Merrimack Street, wants to speak on item number 135.
Thank you, Mayor Elliott. I don't really live at 169 Merrimack Street, although my husband sometimes thinks I do. I live at 62 Windward Road in Lowell, and I am currently the executive vice president of the United Teachers of Lowell. Mayor Elliott, members of the school committee, Superintendent Franco, thank you for this opportunity to speak to you on the issue described in my letter to you, the school committee, on March 13th. For those unaware of that letter, I wrote in objection to the change in requirements of the three teachers to be selected for the thirteen-member advisory committee being formed for the selection of our next superintendent. At a personnel subcommittee meeting on March 2nd, it was announced for the first time in the search proceedings by Massachusetts Association of School Committee Representative Michael Gilbert that the advisory committee would include three active teachers, one from each level, elementary, middle, and high school, as chosen by the UTL. In exactly none of any other meetings in which the members of the advisory committee were specified was the term "active" ever used to describe the teachers to be selected. I understand that the committee will meet in a personnel subcommittee this evening to discuss the superintendent search. I would ask that the committee clarify what is meant by the new descriptor, "active teacher", now used as criteria for teacher participants on the advisory committee. An immediate concern for us was that this change might disqualify UTL President Paul Georges from participating in the search process, since he retired from Lowell High School last June after teaching there for twenty-eight years. Another concern was, where did this change in criteria originate? Was it MASC, Michael Gilbert, who included it as part of the criteria? Was it the school committee who chose to insert it as a requirement? And if so, was there a motion made to change the original criteria from three teachers to three active teachers? If in fact, there was a motion to change the criteria for teacher participants, was there a vote on approving that change? What exactly was the approval process for inserting the word "active" to the criteria? Why is it deemed to be essential to this particular superintendent search when it has never been essential to previous searches? And basically, what does it mean? Additionally, why is it a requirement for only the teacher group of the prospective advisory committee and no other potential group or individual? In the spirit of transparency, will our members and the public learn the rationale behind the sudden change in the search process? Most importantly, when can we expect the committee to provide a clarification on the active teacher stipulation? I sent the letter to you last Friday in response to the reaction we received from our building representatives and executive board members, who expressed great alarm that someone other than our members could instruct us as to who can or cannot, should or should not be members of the advisory committee. We believe that our members are the ones who are qualified to determine who would best serve in their capacity. Although no longer teaching, Mr. Georges is just the same, very active as president, and continues to be a very vital link between the administration and UTL members in the schools. It would be difficult to find anyone who has greater knowledge about the intricacies of the demands, the mandates, and the expectations of current-day public education than Mr. Georges. To imply that he might be excluded from being on the decision-making panel of selecting a new superintendent is beyond all comprehension. When you meet later this evening in the personnel subcommittee session, I strongly urge you to include in your discussion a retraction of this seemingly mean-spirited change in criteria that impacts only one group, and in this case, only one person. A sitting president of a local should never be excluded from the incredibly important mission of selecting the next leader of our school district, if that was, in fact, the intent of this late-in-the-process criteria change. If, however, the added descriptor "active" simply means "active," we know that being active is among the top attributes used to describe the president of the UTL, Paul Georges. And combining that with the fact that he also happens to be the leader of the local that represents four units, his name would, without any doubt, be among the three teacher names submitted to be participants for this very important service to our community. I thank you for allowing me this time to speak to the issue, and I look forward to your clarification of the matter. Thank you.
That concludes the two individuals under public participation. What is the wish of the body?
Mr. Mayor, I don't know if it's appropriate for us to take the item up since it's been added to the agenda by means of this letter, or if it remains the purview of the personnel subcommittee later on tonight. I'm comfortable either way. I just don't want to break any, you know, your...
Yeah, I agree. I don't really know what the parliamentary or protocol is, but I mean, it's discussed on the floor of the council, it was advertised, I guess this is a public document.
Posted as a...
So I say we have a discussion. I think there's a big miscommunication going on here, and I want to come down and speak on it for myself. But you're the chairman of the chairwoman, excuse me, of the personnel subcommittee. So with that, Madam Chairperson?
Thank you very much. I would certainly want to allay any concerns that there's a great conspiracy, because in all honesty, that is absolutely not the case. The "active" was part of the package that came to us from Mass Association of School Committees. As many of you may remember, we had made the decision this time to change our process and to enter into a process that, while it certainly mirrored a lot of our past superintendent searches, really did employ the Mass Association for School Committees as a consultant and really to bring their model, which they had found great success with across the Commonwealth, to Lowell so that we could use an established protocol, with the intention being to try and take some politics out of the whole process. Best-laid plans, as we can all understand. So it is obviously up to you, your membership, everyone, the community to decide if there was a nefarious purpose. I can only tell you from myself and from the work I've done on the committee, absolutely not the case. It was absolutely not the intention. It was just the standard protocol that we have tried, and in some cases, been successful, to implement a new, what we had hoped would be a more streamlined process. As we have this discussion, and I haven't spoken with any of my colleagues, so I don't know what the prevailing sentiment may be, but I do prefer that we do it in open session with all of us rather than wait until the subcommittee. You know, I would posit that, and I would make it in the form of a motion, that we can just vote up or down. Could we make the move to, you know, even name the member on the committee as Mr. Georges and recognize that he will represent all teachers? It would allow us to have that representation of a single voice that would be able to represent certainly not just the teachers, but all four units that he represents. And I would be fine with that. And it would give us the added benefit of being able to pare down the committee, which has been my goal from the beginning, to try and really focus our, that effort, recognizing that with, you know, thirteen people, it's going to be a difficult thing to do. But I think that if we can make that move to bring Mr. Georges in as that representative, I would be, I would support that, and I would put that forth as a motion.
So the concern is the word, is the language, correct? The word "active"? You want that changed? You want the word changed? You don't want it "active"? You don't want a... So you just want "teacher"?
Free teacher. As chosen by UTL.
Okay. So...
My motion doesn't do that. Unfortunately, my motion would request that Mr. Georges participate in the screening committee as the representative for both UTL and the other units that he leads.
Okay. So we go...
You don't get to vote, but I'd ask.
All right. So the letter, there really is, there really is no letter. It was just a request to speak. But the concern that was expressed was the language or the one particular word that is "active." So I think in spirit of, I follow you, Ms. Martin, I understand. I think the point is to change the word so it doesn't have any other inference, right? Entertainer motion that we, how about we just strike the word? Okay, we strike the word "active." Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Yes.
And then Mr. Leary?
I'd make that motion to strike that, that word "active."
Motion by Mr. Conway, second by Mr. Leary.
So would you request then that I rescind the motion I've already made?
Oh, yeah.
Is that the request?
To make a substitute motion.
Well, the motion wasn't seconded, so it wasn't...
Oh, I didn't realize. Okay.
Sorry, Ms. Martin. Okay, so motion made, seconded to strike that particular word from the criteria as part of the, of the Blue Ribbon Committee for Teachers. Discussion on that? Roll call.
Let me clarify. Mr. Gendron?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Hold on. Just clarify, we're voting on Mr. Conway's changing the language to the three members still.
Striking the word "active."
The motion was just to strike...
Motion is just to strike the word "active." No changing members, no changing any other criteria, just to, for this, if there's none of the motion, they can come to the floor after that. We'll entertain it, okay? Correct? Roll call.
Mr. Gendron?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Rosickowicz?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mayor Elliott?
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
Okay, further discussion on these two items that were discussed? Ms. Martin? Nope? Okay, Mr. Gendron?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to say, you know, I really don't think that the Personnel Subcommittee intended to be mean-spirited or underhanded in any way in this effort. I don't think there was a plot to, you know, avoid Mr. Georges, who was a teacher just a few months ago. So, you know, I would encourage anybody who, you know, has a concern about something like that to give me a call. Call me and let me know, because this is the first I've heard that there was this undercurrent of outrage amongst our teachers, you know? I had no idea that this was a big problem. I'm learning about it tonight and, you know, we can strike the word "active." I really don't have a problem with Mr. Georges representing the teachers on that committee. I have been on record saying that, you know, I, I question the need for a selection committee at all. I feel as though we have mass providing us resumes. I think that the school committee, with advice from the union and from the teachers and from neighborhood groups and from community groups, could, could select a group of candidates to be interviewed. I would, I'm more supportive of that approach, but the school committee has decided to do the selection committee and I personally don't have a problem with one of those slots for teachers being filled by Mr. Georges. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. I just wanted to speak briefly because I couldn't agree more, first with what the chairwoman of the Personnel Subcommittee mentioned. This is a different process. We've tried to make it more inclusive, more open, more transparent, as much as we possibly could, to change it, try to remove the political nature of it, and I think we have done that. This is the first I have heard until one of the teachers just came tonight about the concern of "active" and trying to exclude Mr. Georges. I've heard nothing of it. So it's, it's disappointing when you hear words of mistrust and, you know, and an attempt to, you know, eliminate somebody. I think we have done everything that we possibly could to keep this open, to keep it transparent, have every discussion in a public forum, to ensure that it is an inclusionary process. So how it got from, you know, just, I mean, active teachers, you want active teachers. It wasn't to exclude anybody. So I don't know how it got to this point, but I've not heard one word of, of trying to do anything of that nature. And I agree with Mr. Gendron. If there was a concern, someone would pick up the phone and call and say, hey, what's, what's the intent behind this, including you, Mr. Georges, you're on the phone all the time. If you felt that... Well, wait, let's all recognize that I understand where this came from and it's disappointing where we're trying to put a good, open process and to let the teachers and the parents and the community know that this is different, we're trying to make it better, we're trying to get the best candidates that we can, and then all of a sudden, we have teachers here concerned that there's, you know, some cabal, there's some conspiracy going on. There's nothing, that notion should be dismissed to the highest level and I want to state that I have not heard anything up till tonight. And moving forward, let's, let's keep this process open. If there are some concerns, please call us. We're happy to take phone calls seven days a week, so I just, I just felt compelled to come down here to dismiss any notion that anything of this nature was, was part of this. Thank you.
You need to come to the microphone, Mr. Georges? Just so we can all hear you.
Thank you. I will, I will speak to this. And Mr. Elliott, that's correct, I didn't give you a call, but I did speak to other people about it. What it came, I've, I've attended every single meeting, Personnel Subcommittee meeting, taken copious notes, even for me, and, and recorded everything, right from the beginning of the rollout in January. When the rollout came out, Mr. Gilbert spoke about this, he spoke about a 13-person committee, three teachers, one from each level, as chosen by the UTL. I remember at one time, one of the, one of the folks that was in the subcommittee said, who picks the teachers? He said, the teachers' union. It was pretty clear. Through that process, it's been referred to again and again and again, sometimes here, sometimes in subcommittee, about the makeup and the composition and so on, and there was some discussion about some of, how you were going to, you know, get parent groups to be involved and so on. I've sat through all of it, through all of it. It was not until, and it was the same night that Mr. Gendron's motion came up about the, he articulated about having all the candidates declare their candidacy and then the, the process of the advisory group or the selection committee, however you want to term it, being simply advisory. And at that point, the three, the three people who constitute the subcommittee voted against the, and then it came here to the floor. But that was the first night there was any mention about "active," ever said "active." Now, I've been a teacher at Lowell High School 28 years, I've been president for 23 years. I guess I'm highly active within the school community. I certainly meet with the superintendent on a regular basis, sometimes a couple times a week. I'm in subcommittees and do all kinds of other things. "Active" usually termed means "active," actually teaching. Well, for a good part, most of the people who are my peers, people who, who are president of unions my size, don't teach at all and didn't teach all the time that they were presidents. This Lowell is the one community, the largest community in the Commonwealth that doesn't have a full-time president. So I taught at least part-time except for stretches where, where I didn't teach at all, but I was still considered active because I was employed through the Lowell School System rather than employed by the, by the teachers' union. It was just a little bit unusual that on the 2nd of March, for the first time, the word "active" was inserted in the descriptor for who would be teacher participants. Number two, as I left that evening and some of you were there, I think you were all there actually, but I'm not sure who was seated or not because it was after the meeting, Mr. Gilbert indicated to me on two occasions, "active Paul," "active." "Active." I said, "Well," I said, "I'm not sure what you mean by that, but 'active'?" And he said, "Well, someone who's teaching." I said, "Well, we'll have to talk with my members about that." It was the first time it was indicated. When I look at the minutes of the meetings, the first time it was that day. Now, I'm not suggesting there was a conspiracy, I'm not a conspiracy. All I know is when I got the letter and I have a copy of it from the school department asking me, the UTL, well, the UTL, to identify three teachers, the word "active" was inserted. That created a problem. I'm, I'm creating a document, I'm coming back, I go to the executive board, I go to the building reps, I ask for their recommendations, I go to the building reps again after finding out who is interested in serving, who they think would be best, I send three names with approval of my executive board, knowing that "active" I could be interpreted as not being active because of my retirement. Point being, first time it came up was March 2nd. Second point being, when I was, when I was solicited to come up with names that said "active teachers." Interpreted as you want, it was clear that the teachers wanted and the building reps in that discussion wanted to have me as part of this. I'm very proud of the work that we've done collaboratively with our last two superintendents. I think the results have been remarkable. Most people in the state see them as remarkable, considering the complexities of the population of the students that we teach. To be in a situation, and I'm not a great believer in MCAS, but the fact of the matter is, we're one of the few districts in the state where more than 50% of our schools are Level 1 or Level 2. That is remarkable and progress has been consistent. Every once in a while, there's a drop regardless, and I just want to say this, I've never been proud of the staffs, teachers that make up this district, the support staff that works around them, the remarkable results they're getting during a time when I think Ms. Martin, who's been around for a while and understands this stuff, there had been enormous pressures put on educators, enormous. New evaluation systems, a new curriculum, a curriculum putting modules, adoption of that, a new evaluation system that's exhausting, that pretty much puts teachers on the spot 12 months a year. It's almost inhumane. I really fear for this profession and that's why I continue to continue with my, in my capacity to try to advocate for teachers so that the public can understand the harm that can be done to public education and their children through the extensive testing that's required and all the other things that are being put on the backs of teachers. So when this came and it said "active," I had a meeting before I went to Washington, we worked on a policy board out of AFT in, in Washington, and brought it to the attention of the building reps and the executive board, and they said, "We have to do something about this to make sure that this committee understands that they prefer that I be one of the three representatives for teachers." And there was a little discussion about Mr. Georges, me being the one person. Last time around, we had two from the UTL and one from the custodial unit that was on that advisory committee. We encompass all of those groups at this point, representing the teachers, the parents, the custodians, and calf workers. I think it would be very unfair to take the largest group that constitutes four unions and only have one representative. So I just, if I could answer that to you, Mr. Mayor, that's precisely where it came from. It was a concern, it was because it came so late in the game, it was on the 2nd, and it was referred to and then documented in the, in the request for us to supply names. So have I answered any, any other questions that...
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you.
No, I didn't have any questions. I was just making a statement. I mean, it was just, this seems to have been borne way out of proportion over one individual, simple phone call or a discussion, rather than getting all the teachers concerned that there's a conspiracy on, on this to, or someone out to get Mr. Georges. Nothing could be more further from the truth. I just wanted to spell that once again. So it wasn't a question, it was, I don't know why, we, there are many, many, many issues. I'm sure the teachers have many, many issues in their classrooms that they would like to and prefer to be focusing on than, you know, this, some political issue and it could have been solved so much, in a much different manner, put it that way, rather than, you know, taking up time of the teachers and, and this committee over, you know, something that affected one individual. Thank you.
So we don't have anything else on the floor, right? We've already voted?
Right. Okay, thank you everyone for coming down. We resolved that issue and then we'll proceed with the selection process. If there are any other language issues perhaps that you may come across in the future as we proceed through this process, please, please let us know.
Excuse me?
I just said, thank you for coming down. If there are any other language, any other concerns you have, please, this committee is more than willing and will be happy to listen.
Thank you.
Okay.
Appreciate it. On the side of the school committee.
Thank you, Mayor Elliott.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to, well, let's just revert back to the beginning of the, beginning of the agenda. We have a special order of business. We have Phase 2 Plan for the Realignment of the English Language Learners 2015-2016 Report by the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instructions, Ms. Abrams. This is, this is what we should be focusing on.
Thank you, Mayor Elliott. So I would like to welcome this evening from the curriculum office, Dr. Plachea, who is the Coordinator of the English Language Education Program, and her team members, Jana Thoransson, who is the ELL Specialist for Research and Testing, and Carrie Powers, the ELL District Support Specialist. As was discussed at the curriculum subcommittee, we are prepared tonight to talk about the Phase 2 and beyond of the, of our ELL students and changes that need to be made. So without further ado, I will turn it over to Dr. Chia.
Thank you so much. Good evening, Mayor Elliott, members of the school committee, and Superintendent Franco as well as her executive team. Thank you so much for providing me with the opportunity to speak to you this evening regarding our English Language Education Program. But before we begin, I would like to introduce to you my team members who are here this evening. Jana Thora Renson, who is the ELL Specialist for Research and Testing, and Carrie Powers So, who is our ELL District Support Specialist, and also our extended member, Stephen Gervais, who is the Chair of the ELL Program at the high school as, as well as foreign language. So thank you. Let me try to figure out how to get, I cannot see the top screen at all, so let me see if I could. What, I'm sorry?
It comes out technical support.
Right, but I, I just want to be able to show the widescreen, the full screen. Thank you.
So to just run the slideshow, right?
Yes. Thank you for your assistance there. Thank you. Perfect. Thank you. Sure. Thank you. All right. So District Phase 2 Realignment Plan, English Language Learners. The English Language Education Department proposes the second phase. Last year, we began first phase and so this year, we're ready for the second phase of proposal. So these are the reasons why we're proposing the second phase of realignment. One is to provide equal access to all English Language Learners in the education program to meet their linguistic as well as academic needs, and also to improve English Language Learner's academic achievement and growth by providing them with explicit English Language instruction, and also to be able to afford them the opportunity to have a home-based school without having to make unnecessary transition in, in both zones. So for 2015 and forward, the district recommends that at least one ESL teacher for every building to meet the needs of all English Language Learners, with the potential to expand English Language Learner's support in each classroom according to the population increases in the future. And also be able to move newcomer program from two-strand schools to four-strand schools. Right now, we have the Moody School and the Pine Arts. Those are two-strand schools and we would like to propose moving the, the newcomer programs into a four-strand schools. And we also would like to pilot the ESL Convergent Model at the Shaughnessy. And what that means is identifying duly licensed staff to be able to teach ESL as well as their own, you know, the different content that they are responsible for in each grade level, so that they would be able to provide the ESL instruction for their each grade level strand. So continued district challenges. We continue in our district to enroll students that are newcomers into our district. We, we have seen many, many refugee students coming into our district. From June to January, we registered over 109 refugee students into our city. And we were alerted by the Office of Refugees and Immigrants that we will expect to see the double numbers. So by the end of the year, we expect to enroll more than 200 students in our district.
Can I just ask a question? Members feel free as we go. So we receive notification from the federal government throughout the year that new, the students are going to... are going to continue?
To arrive, yes.
I mean, Madam Superintendent, how do you plan for that?
Well, as you, as our followers who've been with us together since I've been superintendent them before, Mayor, it is really very challenging. You know, we're told that there'll be 100 individuals coming. We don't know how many children. We don't know what's going to happen. The federal guidelines sincerely, since I've been in the business of ESL, have not improved very much over the past 30 years. So now we have more support with places like International Institute. When they get here, at least there's some support, but we don't know except for days ahead. And so in a matter of, since January, we get, we've gotten 40 more kids. So you have supported this committee, and the committee before this committee has supported the ESL program with three newcomer classes and three paraprofessionals all the way through every budget season, but we cannot plan ahead. And thus, a lot of the work, we want to get back together with our delegates. I wrote a letter about the early childhood this week. Next week, we're going to get more information about the ESL. It is a moving target, and I have to say, it's something that I think the federal government has not improved on, but we have to educate. So it's very hard to plan, Mayor.
Well, I think we do need to reach out to our, to the members of Congress because this is now starting to become, you know, a significant problem because it affects the quality of this school district when we're looking to add three and four classrooms throughout the year without any financing, without any notification, and without any room. I mean, there's literally no space, physical space for us to accommodate, never mind the resources that these students need, and this is not the first year. Would you guess it's the third, fourth, fifth year running that we're absorbing children throughout the year?
Yes, and we have been alerted by the Office of Refugees and Immigrants that we will expect, continue to expect refugees to arrive in the future, including refugees from Syria. We will begin to see them, but we do not know how many students and at what point of the year and what grade level, age level, we do not get that information in advance. Sometimes we get notification one or two days in advance of their arrival. So it's very difficult to plan.
There comes a point, and I believe we are at the point where we, as we have said, we are bursting at the seams, where we can no longer handle more children in our school system. At what point do we contact the federal government and say, "We don't have any more, we literally do not have any more room." Our classrooms are, you know, well over the size where it's a good learning environment for our children. At what point do we, do we get there? Madam Superintendent?
Mr. Mayor, this committee knows you've gotten copies, that I have been in contact with all of our senators, our representatives in the past. We have had conversations with Representative Songas as well. The federal government makes a plan that a district like Lowell can take the children we're receiving district. To eradicate that would take bigger guns than us, and that's what we need to talk about. We've, we really, it's not that we don't want the children, it's just that we do not have the resources or the capacity, and that's happening in a couple of different areas. And so we will continue to reach out again and get in contact with them, but I got letters back from Senator Warren, and I have had conversations, face-to-face conversations with Representative Songas. I did not hear from the others, but we will do that again, and so I'll continue.
I know you want to proceed with your presentation. I'm sorry for interrupting you, and I think all members want to speak, but let me make it clear, my position clear. This is not about not wanting to educate children. This is about having the ability to educate children and be able to plan accordingly so we have physical space, we have teachers, we have adequate resources to educate these children, so I just want to make that clear. This is not about not wanting to educate children by any stretch, it's literally having the ability to do it. So we have Mr. Conway, Mr. Gendron, Ms. Scott, probably the whole gamut, so I'm sure you'll have some questions. Mr. Conway?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'm glad that this conversation's coming up because I think it's crystallizing the problem and letting the public know. When you have said in the past that we don't know exactly when we're going to get newcomers, and you said that it's, it's, there's very little lead time. Now, in my mind, I thought maybe two months or three months, and what I'm hearing now, we're talking about days, which is, which is really difficult, obviously, to plan. And we're also talking about, we're getting additional, is it $400 for each child? Is that correct, to help educate? And, all right, and approximately, it's cost somewhere in the vicinity of $20,000 to $22,000. So as the mayor said, this here is very difficult to be able to, to be able to handle time after time after time, because eventually, you know, the money is running out, the resources are running out, and I think that, you know, what has been mentioned here a couple times in different ways, we certainly need to get this information to our delegation and let them know how serious this problem is, to the point, and again, what Mr. Mayor, the mayor said, is that we obviously want to educate the students. We want to do the best we possibly can, but if we don't have the appropriate resources to be able to handle it, we're obviously going to run into some problems. And again, I'm glad that this is coming forward, and again, I'm sorry to interrupt your presentation, but I'm glad that we brought this forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Conway. Mr. Gendron?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just briefly to the superintendent, you said we're a receiving district. What does that mean?
There are districts around the nation that are refugee and immigrant receiving districts. There, we have a long history in Lowell. You know the influxes, different populations who have come to settle here over time, Portland, Oregon, Maine. There are certain places that are districts. Lynn is another one. We're not the only one in Massachusetts, but there are certain groups. For instance, we were the recipients of young people from Burma. Those kids were moved, or that moved to Maine. It's a federal plan, and it's not very effective, but it has been ongoing for a long period of time. So as we continue our conversation, I think it's even bigger than just the reps. I think it's how we're going to get beyond that, because we have had letters and conversations. I don't know how much they can do, but whatever subcommittees agree on that, I'm more than willing to speak to anybody.
So Lowell, Lynn, it sounds to me like receiving district is another euphemism for poor district. It sounds like a social justice issue to me, if you ask me. In the year and a half I've been on this committee, this seems like the biggest challenge that we face. I mean, why don't they take, you know, some newcomers and, you know, go drop them in Wellesley, you know? There would probably be outrage if they got dropped in Wellesley. What are we going to do? So we're forced to deal with this, and I want to emphasize the point that everybody's made. I am not saying, I'm not in favor of educating these children. This is America, and this is what we do, and it's great, it's important work, but we need funding for this. We need space, we need resources to be able to handle this. And $400 a student, that's a joke, right? So, I'm sorry, did you have a response?
No, just one more response, that at the last urban superintendent's meeting, as a cohort, we have been working as an organization on what this is about, what this funding is about, because it is all of our, it's all of our urban settings, and it's all about, as you all know, economics-wise, it's about affordable housing, it's about services, it's about support, that urban districts do a better job, but long-term, we are very challenged because of the amount of people that we want to educate to the best of our ability.
So you sparked a little bit of a discussion here, but I do want to salute you folks who, you know, under these circumstances, do the best you can and provide a good education to these folks, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gendron. Ms. Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just like to echo your sentiments that we, this is not about not wanting to educate these children, that our arms are open to the children to come here, but really, we just need the funds to pay for this. We can't meet their needs at this point in time, and we can't meet the needs of our current students at this point in time. I mean, we have technology needs, we have science material needs. I just, I'm not sure, who do we have to reach out to at this point in time to really take action on this? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Scott. You know, Mr. Larry?
Quick, I mean, we had a motion, a couple of motions on the financing. What response did you get from the Congresswoman regarding this? I mean, it's really, it's a State Department, it's an executive issue, I think. We need to reach out, you know, it's really a State Department issue. What did Congressman Songas have to say about it?
About bringing it always to the forms where she goes.
The funds, I mean, we had specifics about, this isn't new, this is not a surprise. We've had two different motions, we've spoken about it for a couple of years now, at different levels, at different committees, on the floor. What type of response were we getting from our representatives on this issue?
I'm getting letters. This is fresh, and I'm sorry, I have a calendar from Washington that I got. I mean, I got a response, a written response, but this is beyond not knowing what to do. It's really a long-range plan, and for a person who's in the field, it's something that's done very poorly. When I did the report for the council, as well as the committee last year, it's costing $6,000 per student, when we're talking about just the newcomer, not the rest. That's part of this. So it's really an action, and that's why we're talking about as a group of superintendents to do a big action piece, which has to include the Department of Education as well. Ms. Larry, it's very frustrating, and I know you're all frustrated, but when we reach out, we have gotten response in the form of a letter that these people will continue to advocate, and they have, they have advocated in their votes, but it has to be collective. It has to be like an urban move, and that's what we're trying to do as urban superintendents towards that. Fact is, we don't have the time. The time is past.
All right, so basically, what we need to do really is, it's a federal level, we really need to contact the Congresswoman, and really bring her here and discuss the issue, tie in with Lynn, Boston's also a receptive city, there's others in the community, and really say, "Look, we do a good job at educating them, but we need more resources, and unfortunately, that's a financial issue." This is not a surprise. This has been going on for a couple of years. This hasn't been anything different. It's just at this point, we're getting to where we're realigning our entire system, and there's not much more options to go at this point. So now we really need to, like, write a letter saying, "We need you here to have that discussion," and then take specific action to get change in what we're trying to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Larry. Further discussion on this issue before we proceed. And, you know, just to make matters worse, you know, last night, we received a report from the state that Chapter 70 is going to be level funded. You know, level funded with Chapter 70 is essentially a cut when we look at all these escalating costs in addition to this, so, I mean, I concur, we have to get the Congresswoman in here, but we have to get to the point where we send, you know, we communicate with the federal government that we don't have any more space for children. You cannot continue to send more children here because we physically don't have any space, and we don't have the money to properly educate them, and I think that's the point where we're going to have to get. I'll file a motion for next meeting on this. Would you like to proceed?
Thank you, and thank you so much for the discussion, the questions and the concerns. You definitely stated our challenges in the district, and of course, you know, with our newcomer programs and the arrival of students with limited English or limited or interrupted schooling, it's an extreme challenge for the district to provide appropriate academic support to students. So at the beginning level of English Language proficiency, we have 953 students at that stage, and then, and out of that 953 students, we have 331 students that are not in our newcomer program, just because of space availability and the limited of staffing that we have in the district. So about 33% of the beginning level of English proficient students are not being serviced appropriately in our district. And also, we also have the more advanced English Language learners that are at the 3.0 to 5.9 level. We have over, as you could see there, about 2,700 students, a little bit over 2,700 students that are at that level, and they are placed in all schools across the district, and some of them are in schools where there's no English teachers.
So could I interrupt again? So what we're saying is, we're accepting the children, they're getting some education, they're getting some skills, but they're not, they're, they're being placed in classrooms where they really should not be because we have no other alternatives.
Right. They're in our regular mainstream classrooms, and because we have a shortage of ESL teachers in the district, many of them are not being serviced by ESL teachers for their English Language development.
That's a significant number that we're placing in classrooms?
Yes.
Okay.
If I could, just a quick question. So what happens to the classroom when this, to the, you know, the mainstream classroom when you have an English Language learner in there because they can't be placed elsewhere?
So they're being taught by regular education teachers, and the Department of Ed, Elementary and Secondary Department, they have mandated an initiative where all teachers, core academic teachers, are required to be endorsed to take the SEI, Sheltered English Immersion, courses, so that they would learn the strategies and the skills to teach English Language learners in their classroom. So we have a mandate, and we have been providing the courses in Lowell for the last, this is our third and final year of providing such a course.
So I can appreciate that, but I would have to think that that classroom, the kids who are not English Language learners in that classroom are going to get a diminished level of education because the teacher has to spend so much of their time, you know, educating the English Language learners.
Yes, that is correct. They are extremely challenged. And so Lowell, you know, despite, you know, your unfailing support in our, for the English Language Education Program in the district, we continue as a district not meeting the annual measurable achievement objectives set by the Department of Education for the last three years now, in both progress in learning English Language and also progress in subject matter content in ELA Math and Science MCAS. So what does ESL instruction look like in our system? We have, in Level Stage One, for Levels 1.0 to 2.9, we have more than 900 students in this category, and we have defined the students in newcomer classrooms as students who are learning English at the beginning level, and many of the students are SLIF students, and SLIF students are students with limited and/or interrupted formal education. So those students are mainly refugee students arriving into our city, and they need full-day self-contained instruction, where we have the non-SLIF students, students from, for example, Brazil or Puerto Rico or Dominican Republic, where they come to our city with educational background, but they also need that English Language support, and they receive 2.5 hours of English Language instruction. And then at Stage Two, which is the middle level of English Language proficiency, we have 2,477 students in that category, and they need to receive one to two hours of ESL instruction per day. And then students at the N, at Stage Three, we have 298 of them, and they should be receiving 2.5 hours per week of ESL instruction. And according to research...
Just, Mayor, if I could, just a quick question.
Sure.
Mr. Larry? At the curriculum subcommittee, Ms. Martin and I, we listened to a similar presentation, well, the presentation. The question I had, and I just wanted to kind of, I rethought what we were talking about, the 2,400, or almost 2,500, do we measure each student? Can we track students and what the percentage of improvement we have from folks coming from Stage Two to Stage Three? I'd like to see, not specific names of people, obviously, but I'd like to see the percentages. How long are these people actually, people, young students, young people, excuse me, are actually staying at that level? Because that is a significant number. We talked a little bit about it, but I think I'd really like to look at the data. How long do people, and we talked, and you were very good, Dr. Chia, regarding explaining it and why the reasons are, but I'd like to measure our success and see how good are we at transferring people from one to the other? And how many from Stage One go into Stage Two? In a percentage basis, and kind of look at that over time. I know it's kind of a lot of work to pull together, but I think it'll be valuable to see if our programs are successful, because you look at the numbers of 24, almost 2,500, you're like, well, man, the first question I had is, why is this not, why are we not moving more people into Stage Three? And we may have a good percentage that are making that jump. I think we need to really look at those numbers a little harder and challenge ourselves a little more. But Dr. Che did outline that in the Curriculum Subcommittee in detail what those groups meant, how many years those groups meant. And it was a very interesting presentation. But I think we need to really drill, I hate to use the word drill down, but really pull apart the numbers. How good are we? How many are moving? How many are not moving? How long are folks staying in that? And then, kind of, once we get that information, really realign or look at our programs. Can we be better at what we're doing? Is it the best we can hope for? But just looking at the numbers themselves, I think we need to go further. Thank you.
Sure. And, you know, I can respond to that a little bit based on, you know, our knowledge and our experience with the students in the program. If they're newcomers, they're brand-new, learning the English, it usually takes them, you know, at least three years to exit out of the newcomer program. And within each year, we're noticing that they make at least one level of gain on their access assessment. So, for a brand-new, and it all depends on the student's background, too. If they're coming with their limited knowledge of their own native, and they have no or limited educational background, it takes them a longer period of time to learn English and at the same time, learning content. So, and then for students who have native language, strong native language, they will be able to transfer and be able to use their native language to learn the content as well as transfer into the new language. So they also take a shorter period of time to learn. But researcher says that students need at least five to seven years to become proficient in English. So, Phase 1 changes that took place, that's taking place now, 2014, 2015 school year, we were able to expand the newcomer programs at the Mc Avenue, Merklin, and the STEM Academy at the Rogers by establishing a second classroom there. And we also were able to expand the newcomer programs at middle schools except for the Dailly. And these changes afforded English language learners with the accessibility to more effective English language development and provided space for newcomers entering the city. So Phase 2 proposed changes for next year is that the district recommends at least one ESL teacher be assigned at each school level, at each school, for next year, with the potential to expand ELL support in classrooms at each school according to the population increases. And then, we propose that we move the newcomer program from the two-strand school to four-strand schools. Those are Moody and the Pine Arts. And then hire, and I'm sorry, it says seven, but it should say six. Seven was just my wishful thinking. But it should say, hire six additional ESL teachers for schools that are currently without an ESL teacher and for schools with high number of English language learners. And then, the fourth one there, to pilot an ESL convergent model at the Shaughnessy School. So the Shaughnessy School is very fortunate because they have a high number of ESL licensed staff in their school, but they're currently not teaching ESL. They're teaching their own general education classroom to their students. But we're proposing that they convert, at least to have one teacher who are duly licensed to also teach ESL for their grade level. And those are the rationale behind the proposed changes there. So, proposed changes for elementary programs is to move the newcomer classrooms, like I said. And we're proposing to move one newcomer classroom from the Moody and transfer that program to the Pawtucketville Memorial Elementary School. And then, one classroom be assigned to the McCullough Elementary School. Because those are schools where there are currently no ESL teacher right now. So by moving the program into that school, we will be able to provide them with an ESL teacher. And they represent the two zones. And then, Phase 2, again. Let's see. I'm not, okay. Why is that? I'm sorry. Okay, for middle school, we also have two newcomer classrooms at the Pine Arts. And we're proposing to move one newcomer classroom from the Pine Arts and place that classroom into the Dailly School. And then, the second classroom from the Pine Arts be absorbed by newcomer classrooms in Zone 2. So this is the current picture of English language learners' classrooms right now in elementary, as you could see there. Some of the schools, we already have the staff in place. And some of the schools, we're proposing to add one additional support staff because currently, they have none. Or they have one, only one. And then, you also see the enrollment numbers of English language learners as well by their proficiency levels in the first two columns. This is our current English language learners' classrooms in middle and K-8 schools. So...
Can I ask you a quick question, Mr. Mayor? Can you give us an idea of, you know, on a percentage basis? You know, what's the percentage basis of ELL students in schools?
In schools? Each school is slightly different. So, for example, at the Stocklosa School, we have over 250 students in that school.
And the population there is...
That is about 40%, 50% of the students.
So that'd be the high end?
That would be the high end. And we also have another, an elementary school at the high end, too, the Lincoln Elementary. Very close to 200 as well. And then, some schools, like the McCullough, they have about 75 students, 79. So depending, we have in Zone 1, this area of town...
About 20%, 20%-ish?
The student in the English language education programs are higher in Zone 1 than in Zone 2.
Thank you.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Conway?
Just a quick question through you to the superintendent of schools. On Phase 2, which we've just finished discussing, what would be the total number of staff members you are recommending that would be needed to implement Phase 2? And what would be the total cost of that?
At this particular point, on the low end, six staff people. Six additional teachers, which would give us the ability to do two things. To have a program with ESL support in every building, which is actually another first step that you could go more towards neighborhood schools in the future to break that down. So six positions. We usually say that six, about 300,000, Mr. Lang? A little bit more? 60 per, so, so it would be 400,000.
I'm sorry?
400,000, more or less.
$400,000.
For that particular, for that particular piece.
Phase 2.
That's not including materials and things like that. But that's, I'm talking about staffing at this particular point. So, and these receiving schools, we're talking probably $20,000, six buildings, so another 120 for that particular piece involved. That's a minimum. But we just want to start establishing this support system in every building.
All right, so, Phase 2, six staff members, and it's going to cost about $400,000. Is that correct? Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? I'm going to try to hold it, try to get through the presentation.
All right. So, Phase 3, proposed changes, 2016, 2017, and beyond. Our future vision for English language education program over time is to, you know, expand the newcomer classrooms in all schools with at least four strands so that each school will have newcomer programs to enroll and accept new arrivals. And also, to build out all schools, we would endeavor to increase the hiring capacity of ESL licensed teachers so that they would be able to support their English learners, not just the beginning level of English language proficiency, but also the more advanced level with, you know, 3.0 and above as well. So, you know, before we continue with the early childhood realignments there, there was also a handout provided to you, hard copy, showing our language program realignment plan and the action steps that we're going to take within our department, reaching out, making sure that, you know, staff, schools are aware, are aware of our plan. And so, we've been meeting with principals and members of central staff to plan the realignment so that we would be able to work and understand the process together and really develop a very feasible plan together as a district. And then, we presented to the Lowell School Committee Subcommittee last week, and here we are tonight presenting this proposal to you all. And we also plan, and this week, we communicated with schools to make sure that they understand the proposal and is aware of the proposal. And on March 23rd, we plan to communicate with Family Resource Center so that we could define a plan to communicate with families. And March 23rd, March, through March 25th, we plan to communicate with families using our native language translators so that we would be able to call them personally and inform them of our proposed plan. And also, following the personal phone call, we will send a letter, a translated letter home to describe the proposed plan. And also, we will include in our English language education Family Night meeting that's coming up on March 26th, we will also share this information to them. And then, on March 23rd there, we will communicate with community organizations and partner organizations so that they will also be aware and help us communicate with the families that they work with. And then, August 2015, that's when families will receive the official placement letter as well as bus passes with the new assignment. So, thank you so much for the opportunity to present. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Sorry we interrupted your presentation, but I think we probably get most of the questions to you during rather than after, so...
Thank you.
For the questions, for the discussion? Entertained a motion to accept the report of progress and place on file by Ms. Rossigaw, second by Ms. Martin. All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the opposed, motion carries. Again, thank you very much. I'm sure we'll be seeing more of you in the future, and this item will come up for discussion as we move forward to come up with a plan to work with the federal government on how to implement this in a responsible, in a responsible way.
Yes, thank you. We really appreciate your continued support. Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda. We move on to the amendments. Entertained a motion, we have the approval of the amendments of the regularly scheduled school committee meeting on Wednesday, March 4th. Entertained a motion to approve by Ms. Rossigaw, second by Ms. Scott. Questions, discussions, edits? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. And the opposed, motion carries. Thank you to the additional staff as well. We thank you for your patience. Moving on to the next section of the agenda, we have permission to enter. Permission to enter, March 18th, 2015. Right over to you, Madam Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, to the Carding School Incorporated in the amount of $1,002 to amend the existing contract to provide for price increase for two students enrolled in receiving services as outlined in the Special Education IEP. Funding provided by the School Department Budget Special Education Tuition Account. To the Evergreen Center Incorporated in the amount of $21,861 to amend the existing contract to provide the additional, for the additional tuition costs for five students enrolled and receiving services as outlined in the Special Education IEP. Funding provided by School Department Budget Special Education Tuition Account. To Ed Co Collaborative in the amount of $31,412 to amend the existing contract to provide for the out-of-district tuition costs for one student plus one additional student enrolled in receiving services as outlined in the Special Education IEP. Funding again provided by the School Department Budget Special Education Account. To the Learning Center for the Depth Incorporated in the amount of $33,419 to amend the existing contract to provide the out-of-district tuition for one student and one additional student enrolled in receiving services as outlined in the Special Education IEP. Funding again provided through the Special Education Tuition Account. To the Stenson School Incorporated in the amount of $32,445 to provide for out-of-district tuition costs for one student enrolled in receiving services as outlined in the Special Education IEP account, again, Special Education Tuition Account.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Questions? Ms. Scott?
I know. Three, Mr. Mayor, and a Madam Superintendent. You mentioned price increases on the special ed costs. Is there a cap at all that's going to go in place or anything else? I mean, we're talking about level funding of Chapter 70 and 9C cuts, and we're still seeing price increases in all the special ed costs.
Yes, the Department of Education allows for a price increase. As a matter of fact, I was at an advisory board this morning, and the collaborative talked about a 3% increase. I don't know if there's a certain time, is it January, Mr. Lang? When those are announced? January and July. So they put a certain cap on that, but it was, they go up a couple of times a year with that cap that's deemed by the state.
So they're given a 3% increase, but we're not giving any increase in our funding? So they automatically set us at a loss in our budget?
That's correct.
Thank you, Ms. Scott, Ms. Rossigaw.
I mean, I just have to say, it's a real problem because it really disallows us from really doing our budget planning. You know, so if they're going to increase their prices arbitrarily halfway through the year by $20,000, that's $20,000 that we have to pull from someplace. So I wonder if there's some, if there's something that can be done at the state level that says, you know, that disallows them from doing that, from engaging in such practices? You know, and then the other question I have is, I know that we have our own representative on the Board of Advisors for the collaborative, you know, and, you know, I know on the one hand, as a Board of, as an advisor, that you have a fiduciary responsibility to that organization, but, you know, you have a dual role. We have a fiduciary role to our district. And is there any advocacy at that Board of Advisory level that says, that pushes back and says, "You can't do this to our districts because it's blowing our budgets out of the water"? So, I'm just curious if those conversations are happening.
Well, as early as today, there is, there was a conversation about the 3%. And that Board, as you all know, as you have appointed me thankfully over the last four years, it could be a school committee member as well as it can be a superintendent of schools as by legislation, you know, state mandate. And there was conversation about 3%. And is that just a blanket statement? And how do you have that? And they said, "Well, they have a range, and we found out the possible". But there was a conversation about just 3% at this particular point is something that we can't do. We don't even know what we're getting for funding. So, yes, there was a conversation, and they will come to a, but the Board has to approve that. So, you know, we all have a vote on that, and it was put into abeyance, actually, as of this morning. But it does happen. That's your local collaborative. But that is what happens at all of those schools, all the ones I just talked about. They have a certain range, and they don't have that collaborative or that kind of input from local public officials. They have a private kind of entity. I'm sure they have advisory boards as well, but they don't have at stake what we might have.
Further questions? Entertained a motion to approve by Mr. Conway, second by Mr. Gendron. Roll call.
Mr. Gendron?
Yes.
Mr. Larry?
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Ms. Rossikowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mayor Elliott?
Yes.
Six yeas, one absent.
Motion approved. Move on to the next section of the agenda. We have memorials. We have two memorials on the agenda this evening. The first one is for Madeline Buck. She's the mother of the Stocklosa School teacher, Sarah Langlaze. Second memorial is Miriam C. Warnock. She's the mother of Stocklosa music teacher, Stephen Warnock. Could we all please rise for a moment of silence? We also darken the chambers. Moving on to the next section, we already disposed of public participation section. We'll move on to the motions. First motion of the evening, there's no objection by, well, Madam, yeah, I should probably come down. I'm going to speak very briefly. The motion does speak for itself, but I'll just leave that up there.
So, a motion by Mayor Rodney Elliott requesting that the superintendent to provide information report on process to codify employment terms and conditions for all non-union employees in the School Department, similar to all non-union city employees. A second by Ms. Rossikowitz. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Vice Chairwoman. The motion speaks for itself. I've spoken of this in the past, and it's, it's really, not so much the superintendent, really the solicitor, cities, work with the city solicitor, to come up with a report, essentially to put an ordinance in place similar to that that exists on the city side for city employees who are not part of any union collective bargaining unit, particularly whether it's department heads, or quite frankly, anyone else that's not covered. And that does exist. In fact, we continue to, we just sent a new version or amendments to that existing ordinance that provides all, as the motion explains, just personnel benefits and other provisions of the city code. So, motion speaks for itself. It's more of a report to get to the committee to see what that would look like, rather than have contracts, different contracts at different points in time. This would, to me, standardize it. It would unif- provide some uniformity to, to those employees that are not part of it, and make it a more seamless process as well for, you know, for the public. So, I will probably have more to say when the report does come in, and members will have a better idea of what it looks like and what we'll cover. And it doesn't exclude contracts from being put in place. For instance, there is, the ordinance does cover someone like the Chief of Police, but he was taken out of civil service, and he's covered by a contract. So, there, it just provides more flexibility as well. Thank you, Ms. Vice Chair.
All those in favor say aye. Opposed, motion passes.
Moving on to the next section of the agenda. That was the only motion of the evening. We have Subcommittee reports. We have the first report of the evening. It's a finance Subcommittee report and approval of the minutes of the meeting of Monday, March 2nd. Chair like to recognize the chairperson, Mr. Leary.
Thank you, Mayor. It was a meeting attended by the full Finance Subcommittee. The various topics of the agenda, we're talking about the current status of our salary accounts and overall accounts. Mr. Lang presented regarding our current salary accounts, that they are in line with our budget, our previous budget, our current budget, and that we're actually, hopefully for a small variance at the end of the year, which will be about, you know, one, one and a half percent of overall cost. So, it's about, close to a million dollars. Hopefully, we'll know more after the, the March numbers in the next couple of weeks when we have our, our series of financial Subcommittee's in preparation of the budget. We did go over the budget calendar a little bit. What we'll be discussing as a committee, we'll be setting up specifically three different Subcommittee meetings. One discussed the elementary school budget. We'll be doing that at an elementary school, so we're taking that fantastic Finance Subcommittee on the road. Always a good time. Check it, please out, it's a good time. The middle school, we'll have our second as well. We'll probably project that towards the end of April, and we'll have our final right before the, the actual budget calendar in May. If you look at the projected budget calendar, we're looking for the recommended budget to come out on the Wednesday, May 20th meeting. And proposed dates for budgeting are the 28th as well as June 1st. But as we get into the Finance Subcommittee, the process will be to really discuss what options we have at different levels, discussing a lot of some of the proposals. You heard today about additional teaching staff. Some of that will be coming up in terms of the cost. I know that we discussed a little bit of that, probably equalling $400,000 in that range. We'll do a lot of that discussions. We'll also go, we'll have more of an update in terms of where the Chapter 70 funding is coming in, which, as the mayor had said earlier today, doesn't look too optimistic. Looks like it's level funding. Mr. Lang will be presenting in terms of where our structural budget will be. I believe also, updates on healthcare costs will be provided at the, I believe, the initial elementary school Subcommittee that we'll be scheduling shortly. We'll try to make sure we get everybody's calendars on so we can make it really kind of a working, full committee operation so all that, all can attend, and we will make sure that it's also televised. Getting into the, the current status of cuts, although there's not actual cuts to direct aid, there was cut, cuts to different line items with, with grants that affected us immediately or the aforementioned 9C cuts from the governor. We had over a million dollars cut, some of which actually hit our budget currently with current staffing. Mr. Lang outlined $459,742 in direct cuts to current staffing as well as busing needs. And those break out as a 9C cut of a 22% reduction in our quality full-day kindergarten grant, which is kindergarten paraprofessionals equalling $122,510. An additional C cut for $7,352, coordinated family community engagement grant. That was a cut that actually impacted the remaining balance in that grant. A significant cut of equalling $200,000 for our sped out of tuition. We just spoke a little bit about the 3% increase. It's kind of ironic, isn't it? So, that's a $200,000 in the middle of our budget cut from the governor. And the sped transportation cuts, which are always a challenge for us, there's an additional cut added, $60,000. In addition, Lowell Teacher Academy stipends, $69,880, for a total of $459,742. The committee discussed this, and it was a motion made by Ms. Martin, seconded by Ms. Scott, in order to take from our current existing suspense account, which is 1.8 million, 1,000, 1,858,803, and move $459,742 to take care of that mid-year cut to make sure we can continue with all those programs, specifically, you know, the paraprofessional folks who are currently working in those positions. So, that was a motion made by Ms. Martin, seconded by Ms. Scott. It was passed unanimously, and I make that as a form of a motion now to the full committee to accept.
Motion by Mr. Leary, seconded by Mr. Gendron to bring forward that motion to recommend a transfer of the suspense account of $459,742 to cover such costs. Discussion on that motion. Can I just ask one question to the Chair, Chairman or Mr. Lang? The 69,880 mentor stipends, what, could you describe that, what that is all about and what that covers?
Yes, we have a provision in the teacher's contract where new teachers as part of the Teacher Academy and the induction program appear it up with a mentor teacher. And we had more new teachers this current year that we had to contractually, and it's also tied to DOE licensure, we had to match up with mentors. So, that's actually, that was a one-line item. That wasn't a 9C cut. It's just a budget issue where we had underbudgeted the number of mentor teachers that we're going to need to cover all of our staff for the current year. So, that was a recommendation to, to add that 69,880 to fully, fully fund the mentor stipends for the rest of this year.
So, how many teachers does that cover? That 69,880? Or how many, how many teachers are there, and what is the stipend per teacher?
It depends on the, the mentor itself can technically have anywhere from one to four or five mentees that they would be working with, and they receive a prorated stipend based on the number. The 69,000 is probably going to cover somewhere between 35, 40 teachers, their mentors.
So, is the, is it fair to say the annual stipend for, the annual stipend is, is it a fixed amount?
Oh, the, yes, the annual stipend's a fixed amount. We basically underestimated the number of new teachers in the district that we're going to require mentors.
And what is that amount, the stipend?
It varies based on how many, the teacher themselves that needs the mentor doesn't receive the stipend. It's the mentor that does, and it depends on if they have one person that they're working with or five. It can range from, say, $1,000 to $2,500. And it's a stipend that covers the entire year's work, and it's for work that actually happens, the majority part, outside of the school day.
Right.
And over the summer in preparation for the school year.
Thank you. I just was looking for the information. I appreciate that explanation. Thank you. For the discussion, motion made, and seconded, roll call.
Mr. Gendron?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Rossikowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mayor Elliott?
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
The second, the second.
Can I just ask one other question? So, this money is coming from the suspense account money that was set aside when we went through the budget deliberation process. That was essentially set aside for collective bargaining agreements, in large part. I understand that that was in total, but that's what the money was set aside, and anything moving forward that is drawn against this account?
Anything you take out comes right out of that suspense account. It would reduce that number, correct?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Additional cuts, 9C cuts was our summer school program. There's also two significant federal program cuts. The total was $565,000. The committee, we discussed that in length. What we are going to do is set up a separate Subcommittee with the Student Support Services and Finance. As the budget becomes more real, I think part of the recommendations coming forward would be, we're going to have to find a different way to do this. And we're going to have to find out probably in the next couple of weeks, because we might need to make a decision whether we're going to have the same programs we've had in the past with summer school. So, we expect that meeting probably next week, really, and have that discussion on April 1st. But overall, we didn't take action on that because there's a lot of information that the administration had put forward. Mr. George's was active. He actually had a very good suggestion. So, we took that into consideration, but there's a lot of different items that come up. Good sense of humor. I think the part here really is that the way the budget's rolling out, we may not have these programs. We have to look to do it differently, but we'll have a recommendation next week for the Subcommittee, then for the full committee on April 1st. We also touched base quickly regarding deficits in the food service account. We was $70,000. The irony there is that we actually make money in our food service account, but are not allowed to take students, parents who are in arrears to balance that out. We have to find a mechanism of actually collecting that. And there's a lot of different topics in regard, regarding how to do that, whether we go out and hire a bill collector or we become better at that. I think that's something we need to resolve as we come up in the budget, because the state won't allow us to roll over our, our success with the program into balancing that. So, that's something that the recommendations will be coming out from the administration in the next month, or actually during the budget time before we get to next year. So, we will be setting up a calendar, getting all the committee members and the public involved in terms of the budget. We plan to have that really in April and at the, really, hopefully before we get into May. We don't anticipate there'll be need for more meetings, but the budget calendar, we do possess, we do believe we'll have everything at the end of May for the presentation from the administration. And that's the report of progress, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, the motion's still on. Entertained a motion, a motion made by Mr. Leary, seconded by Ms. Martin to accept the recommended budget schedule and present it to the full committee, which we did. Further discussion on that? Roll. Yeah, I think we're fine. I think we need a roll call. Yeah, roll call on the budget schedule. My apologies.
I think that's a form of a motion, the official budget schedule.
Right. We can go over the dates, but it's in, it's in the minutes. We'll accept the minutes after, but it's Wednesday, Superintendent's recommended budget, Wednesday, May 20th. Budget hearing will be tentatively scheduled for discussion, May 28th. Follow-up hearing on Monday, June 1st. Yeah, motion was made by Ms. Leary, seconded by Ms. Martin. Roll call.
Mr. Gendron?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Rossikowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mayor Elliott?
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
Entertained a motion to accept the report of the report of progress and placed on file by Ms. Rossikowitz, seconded by Ms. Scott. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the opposed, motion carries. The minutes and report is accepted and placed on file. Next report, we have a report from the Personnel Subcommittee, approval of the minutes of the meeting of Monday, March 2nd. Chair recognizes Chairwoman Ms. Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I offered this report at our previous meeting, so tonight we only need to approve the written minutes.
Motion to accept the minutes by Ms. Martin, seconded by Ms. Rossikowitz. All those in favor to accept the minutes and place them on file signify by saying aye. And the opposed, the minutes are accepted and placed on file. Moving on to the next Subcommittee report, it's a report from the Curriculum Subcommittee, is a report and approval of the minutes of the meeting of Tuesday, March 10th. Chair would also recognize Chairperson Ms. Martin.
Thank you very much. The Curriculum Instruction Subcommittee did meet. Present from the Subcommittee were myself, Ms. Scott, Mr. Leary. From central office, we had Superintendent Franco, Assistant Superintendent Abrams, and then we did have a number of other staff who were there as part of some special presentations. Our first presentation was from the Riley School Administration and Coaching Team. This has been part of our endeavor within the Subcommittee to be able to welcome some of our, some of our staff at multiple levels who can really come in and talk to the Subcommittee about some of the real steps forward that are being taken in our district so that we can really be very well aware of where our successes are happening, and the hope being certainly that we can encourage those and, and try to populate them across the district when we see great successes. The Riley is certainly an example of that. The presentation was led by Principal Sean Karabatsas. We also had Assistant Principal Kathy Woods, and the coaches from the Riley, Kathy Klow, Carolyn Carbono, Sharon Cooney, all were there to present to the Subcommittee. You know, the turnaround that's happened at the Riley is extremely impressive. The leadership of Principal Karabatsas and his team, I think, has been very well noted, certainly by this committee, and I think more importantly, from the school community that they support. There was a great deal of talk about the opportunities for communication and support within that, that professional learning community, the role of the coaches and the way that coaches and teachers have been able to work together, have the appropriate time to be able to have those conversations about specific student performance, about, about all the many, many issues that happen in any given school day. And the Riley has really, I think, done an exceptionally good job of being able to, to turn around a school that had certainly been struggling and bring together a team that has been very successful for, for the students that they serve. So, it really was, you know, as we talked about, you know, the goals that they've set for themselves, they were certainly proud to share those with us. Strengthening the foundation for school improvement, promoting a climate for learning, collaboration and shared leadership, enhancing instruction and learning through a workshop model, promoting targeted instruction interventions and enrichment for all students, strengthening the RTI model that they have in place to promote data-informed instructional practices and interventions based on formative assessments and the student assessment team meetings that they're hosting every five weeks. And their final goal, communicating the expectation that all children can learn and achieve at high levels when given proper time and quality instruction. So, you know, there are certainly some very high-minded goals that they've set for themselves as a team and that they're implementing every day in their classrooms. So, it was a very impressive presentation, and I know the entire Subcommittee appreciated these professionals taking the time to come in and share their success with us. Second topic was an update on the elementary science professional development. We've talked a great deal about how we're trying to support our science instruction, particularly among the, with the FOSS science kits that are being implemented throughout, giving people, teachers, and again, most importantly, our students, the opportunity to do project-based learning, which is, of course, of particular interest and efficacy when you're talking about the science curriculum. So, it was great to have our district support specialist for STEM learning, Paula Bransfield, came to the Subcommittee to share with us the reactions that she's getting from our teaching professionals and the reactions from students to these, these new kits that are being implemented across the district. The final top- The final topic was the realignment framework for English language learners. We've had the benefit of seeing that as part of our special reports this evening. So, I would submit that as a report of progress.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Questions? Motion to accept the report as a report of progress by Mr. Leary, seconded by Mr. Conway. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The motion is accepted as a report of progress and placed on file. Moving on to reports of the superintendent, we have two, two thousand fifteen graduation dates and Lowell High commencement speaker. Madam Superintendent?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just quickly to review, the high school graduation is June third at the Sangres Arena. Of course, Mayor Elliott will be on the stage, front and center. Our commencement speaker is Arthur Anton, voted by the students. Our adult education graduation will be Friday, June fifth, at the auditorium at Lowell High School. A good Mr. Mayor will, will oversee that. But I do need a motion to cancel or postpone the June third school committee meeting as a result of us being prepared from the committee.
Okay, entertain, I'm sure it'll be a close vote, but entertain a motion?
I'll, I'll make a motion that we cancel that meeting so that we can be at the graduation that evening.
Motion by Mr. Gendron to cancel that meeting, June third, to allow the committee to be at the graduation. Seconded by Mr. Conway, roll call.
Mr. Gendron?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin? Ms. Rossikowicz?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mayor Elliott?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Madam Superintendent, we all set? Motion to accept that as a report of progress and placed on file by Ms. Martin, seconded by Ms. Rossikowicz. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to the next report of the evening, we have the report two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen, school survey and proposed school calendar. Madam Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you know, starting way back in February, we were talking about the calendar, potential changes, what would come as a result. We did have a parent survey. The unions conducted a survey for their staff as all of these changes in calendar are under our collective bargaining agreements. We had a great response. We had one thousand two-hundred-and-seventeen people respond. But as you look at the overall data, things are pretty much being recommended to be the, the same, except for perhaps some interest in changing those vacations, which could potentially be something we might propose to have a conversation with, with our unions about. There's a little bit more of a move. If you look at the data in the report, our, our public totally disagrees with our schools opening in mid-August. They, but they, they wholeheartedly agree, four-point-two-eight percent. I mean, the, it's a five-point scale. It's four-point-two-eight is the, the result. Think we should start our school, and it usually does. No, really, a low percentage wants a school on Saturday if we need to make up time, and they want Christmas vacation to stay the same. But there is a little bit more flexibility in the parent survey within the break schedule. It's kind of right in the middle, about two-point-five, which is halfway. But that has a little bit more, um, agreement to it. Of course, everybody wants the school year to end by mid-June, but we do have to do a hundred-and-eighty days. So, something's gotta give, and that will be further discussion. But it was anything that was really varied. It wasn't varied. In my meeting today with superintendents, they were talking about how this has been discussed and discussed and tried in a couple of places, but it went back to the old calendar. So, it's interesting. But it's something worth investigating. The one that was kind of a surprise to me was the Good Friday. There was a three-point-seven, three on a five-point scale that, that agreed. So, that was strong. And so, that was the data that we got back. So, after looking at that, I am gonna propose a very similar calendar after getting that kind of data. And I don't know if there is a will of the committee to entertain any more in collective bargaining. But it will make us have, it's all the dates, it has the total dates there with the one-hundred-and-eighty-five-day calendar next year. I welcome any questions, but it would have the same day as we're getting out this year, June twenty-third, even if we had the five days. So, I don't know if you want to go back to the drawing board, if you want to add that, that to our sessions as we're in negotiations as early as tomorrow, sessions. So, I just wanted to bring that forward, because we are getting many requests for that calendar. If that's what you wanna do at this point. We did do the investigation, and it really did not give us much leeway to do much else.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. What was the voice of the committee? Ms. Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through to Madam Superintendent, so on the Good Friday question, which I had proposed on the floor the last meeting, there were about seventy-five percent, a little over seventy-five percent, that either neutral, agreed, or strongly agreed with changing the holiday. Would that be something that would, obviously, you'd have to bring that to the union to discuss if we're gonna make any changes?
Yes, we'd have to bring that.
And, and have you had any discussions with them about, I mean, their surveys that were done? Were they different than this survey?
I had conversations with Mr. Georges. He told me anecdotally, and, but he has not released the data, that it was very similar. We can have further conversations. I will, in fact, have deeper conversations with him on, on, on that one day or beyond. That's what I'm asking, from our data. He said it was very similar. It was almost scary how, how, how similar it was to the data from the parents. So, I will have a conversation about the Good Friday, but overwhelming, it's, it's really more, we, we can look into it if you'd like me to.
If anything, this gives us strong data. If we do have to use a day for snow, if we have, you know, a rare occurrence like we did this year, then we should strongly consider it next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Scott. Further discussion on this? I know that there was a motion or some, some discussion about changing, canceling one of the two weeks or combining the February and April vacation and just have one March vacation. I still think that's a good idea. I think we're keeping with the same pattern that we have had in the past, and I, I'd like to explore it. I, I don't know what the procedure is, but I, I still make it, think it makes some sense. We know that we get this pretty much regular pattern of bad weather, and we're always, you know, concerned and stressed out about extending or canceling sometimes, you know. I just think it makes some sense. We always seem to be boxing ourselves in, and do any other school districts do that, Madam Superintendent, in Massachusetts? I know there's some other states, but is that something that's regulated through the state? Or is it up to the individual school districts that can just have one school, one, one week rather than two separate ones?
It was, it, it has been tried in, in some districts. I don't really have long-term data. In the conversations I've had with different superintendents, this morning, a, a school committee member was talking about the one year that they did have this happen in, I guess it was Marblehead or Amesbury. And it's still this urban legend, they'll never try it again. It did not go well. You do pick up three days by the holidays. There, three days are picked up by collapsing the two weeks. But I have not received, and I've asked quite a bit, because this whole calendar thing's all over the place. You've seen the surveys online that we actually adopted the one from the state. And I do not have a clear view that it's something that happens quickly. They said it's a negotiation process, and it takes a number of, a, a lot of time for it to happen. If it's something that is a core belief of this committee, we'll be willing to bring it forward and have those kind of discussions with our various unions. But at this particular point, I have no clear data. That many districts have done it at this point.
Okay, thank you. Entertained a motion to accept the report, as a report of progress. Actually, we need a, need a motion to approve the calendar. What was the voice of the committee? Motion to approve the calendar on a roll call vote.
I just-
Miss, Mr. General?
The current calendar does not implement the changes of the new weeks. It does not change Good Friday, does not, keeps it the same. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Discussion? I don't see, no motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Mr. Leary, seconded by Mr. Conway. Roll call.
Mr. Gendron?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Rossikowicz?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mayor Elliott?
No.
Six yeas, one nay, approved.
Moving on to the next item. Two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen, school committee meeting dates. Madam Superintendent?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this time of year you approve the school committee meeting dates for the upcoming year. This continues first and third Wednesday calendar for next year.
Discussion? Move to approve by Ms. Rossikowicz, seconded by Ms. Martin. Roll call.
Mr. Gendron?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Rossikowicz?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mayor Elliott?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Next report by the superintendent, Youth Harbors Report. Madam Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a report in answer to a motion by Ms. Rossikowicz that asked for a partnership with Youth Harbor to work with Lowell High School students who are homeless and at risk of becoming homeless to include students aging out of state foster care and find stable long-term hous, housing solutions. Assistant Superintendent Durkin provided us with a nice report of the progress of a really very wonderful program. She is giving us some data of what has happened to our children over the time they've been there with this extra support. I'm going to let her speak on this report, as she was the one who wrote the report and knows the details much better than I.
Actually, actually, I'd thank you. I'd like to thank Headmaster Martin and the Coordinator of Student Support Services at Lowell High School, David Robinson, for not only preparing the report for, but for championing and supporting the effort to bring Youth Harbor's rediscovery to Lowell High School. So, since the last report that I provided to the committee on November fifteenth, two thousand thirteen, there's been much progress to bring this program to Lowell High School. As, since the last time that we spoke, they were able to secure funding through the Parker Foundation to have a staff member trained through Youth Harbor's rediscovery. They actually conducted the interviews for that position last week. And we are told, I was told as of today, that an individual will be starting and receiving training within the next two weeks, actually, at Lowell High School. And we've already signed them up for our dropout prevention task force. So, that's good news for our students who are homeless, who are unaccompanied, and who are aging out of foster care, to provide some additional supports to help them to graduate high school and be prepared for experiences beyond high school.
Ms. Rossikowicz?
I, I'd just like to say, say thank you for the work that all of the staff have done on this. I know this wasn't an easy program to, to bring about because of the lack of funds. And so, I'm really very thankful to the Parker Foundation for providing the funds for this. I know that they have a deep interest in, in serving homeless students, in particular, unaccompanied homeless teens. So, this is fantastic. And what I found rather startling in this report is that the staff have already identified sixty to seventy students who fall into that category, who would really be in need of these services. Now, these are the kids that, that are on their radar. And I can only imagine the real number, all those children that fly under the radar, that keep it close to the vest and don't allow anyone to know that they're in a precarious situation, they're couch hopping, or they're, you know, sleeping in places not meant for human habitation. So, this gets our kids back on track, thinking about algebra tests the next day, rather than thinking about where they're gonna sleep that night. Thank you.
Further discussion, questions? Thank you for the report. Entertained a motion to accept the report as a report of progress and place on file by Ms. Martin, seconded by Ms. Scott. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Next report from the superintendent is report information to state delegation regarding nine C budget cuts.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to give you a copy of the letter that was sent out this week to our delegation, our, just to ask for their support. That quality kindergarten grant will cut all of our paraprofessionals in, in kindergarten, and our class size is over twenty-four. And it is a huge loss. It's a lot, it's, it's a position we need to keep and prioritize no matter what. I did write this letter. I did also let the delegation know that we will plan our semi-annual meeting for the twentieth of May. That's gonna be a budget session as well. So, we thought that that would be a good time to have that. But I, we, I have some serious advocacy to do on the state level, as well as all of us. And I want our teachers and everybody to know that this, this is some, these are some very key, direct service positions to children. And so, I just wanted to bring your attention to this letter.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Motion to accept the report as a report of progress and place on file by Mr. Conway, seconded by Mr. Gendron. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Last report of the evening on home education. Madam Superintendent?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have a parent who is requesting permission to home educate their child, Joy Vanye, on Laurel Street, would like for her child to be educated at home, which will make the total families thirty-three, and the total number of children being home educated forty-nine in Lowell.
Make your motion to accept the report, as a report of progress and place on file by Mr. Leary, seconded by Ms. Martin. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Oh, excuse me, roll call.
Mr. Gendron?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin? Ms. Rossikowicz?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mayor Elliott?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Moving on to the next section of the agenda. We have convention and conference requests. There are two requests. One from the Lowell High's boys and girls track and field, the other one for girls' track and field to compete. One in Pennsylvania and the other one in New York. No additional funds to the school department budget. Entertained a motion to take both, both of them together by Ms. Rossikowicz, seconded by Ms. Scott. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion, motion passes. Entertained a motion to approve by, by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Conway. Roll call.
Mr. Gendron?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin? Ms. Rossikowicz?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mayor Elliott?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Last two items of the evening. We have two communications, one letter from the Pataca Memorial Principal, Matt Stahl. What is the voice of the body? Want me to read the letter, or just accept it as a communication, place on file? Madam Superintendent, just wanted, it's, it's to the school committee? Do you want to just give a brief synopsis?
Yeah, I just wanted to let you know that there is a, an organization, Joseph Middlemiss, All You Need Is Love, the donation. And what they do is they've been giving these benches, buddy benches, and they're, they're placed for a kid when he's a little down to just go and re, kind of reconstruct or meet with a buddy. And they've given us a couple of benches, and we have a pay, pay it forward kind of part of their program. So, that community, Pataca Memorial, is buying one of these benches to give to a sister school, and that's what's going on around our system. So, this organization, I actually thank the gentleman, but I will thank him on your behalf. I just wanted to let you know about it.
Thank you. Nice, nice idea, buddy bench. Entertained a motion to accept the communication and place on file by Mr. Leary, seconded by Ms. Rossikowicz. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes. Last item is a letter from the United Teachers of Lowell, Executive Vice President Marion Dumont. That was previously discussed earlier in the evening. Entertained a motion to accept the letter and place on file, excuse me, by Mr. Conway, seconded by Mr. Gendron. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? That motion carries as well. Entertained a motion to adjourn, and there is a Personnel Subcommittee meeting that is televised, excuse me, advertised for following this meeting, just so the public knows. But entertained a motion to adjourn by Mr. Leary, seconded by Ms. Scott. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. This meeting stands adjourned.